Call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Malsen.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer.
Here. Silent prayer followed by flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Replay statement.
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, September 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, September 8th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Welcome, everyone. Agenda approval additions or deletions? We'll be pulling F6, Consumna Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Agreements from the consent agenda. Any other additions or deletions? Presentations. New employee introduction. Wade couldn't join us tonight, so we won't be doing that. So next will be the Summer Reading Challenge Program. Samantha LeBlanc, Sacramento Public Library Librarian. Welcome, Samantha.
Thank you, Mayor Huer and City Council for inviting me today to talk about the library's summer reading program. This year's, you guys will look at the slide. This year was our highest total number of signups for the past five years. We signed up over 1,081 people in Galt. We had a 59% finishing rate from all the people that signed up for the program. The pictures here are the winners who won our branch prizes. You can see happy faces of children. They have Lego sets and also remote-controlled cars. This year, well, as every year, our summer reading prizes are always a day draw. Thanks to Mayor Huer and the City Council, we received swim passes. We gave each child a swim pass for every 10 books they read and logged onto the library website. So we gave a total of about 370 swim passes this summer. Again, thanks to Mayor Huer and City of Galt Parks and Rec. I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the library and also the branch staff. I think just a little bit quickly there, but I did want to say that the total number of books read for all of our summer reading participants involved was 11,808.
Wow.
It's a really wonderful achievement, and I just wanted to make sure the committee is aware of the library and all the community of readers and stuff during the summer. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Samantha.
Thank you.
Public comment?
Under Government Code Section 549, 54.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located at the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered.
So all the speaker cards I have are for an agenda item. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Tom?
Well, let me see. I attended the installation of Galt's new postmaster. I also attended the meeting on the Commission of Aging. Nice, pleasant evening at night at the Ray. I think there's another one coming up, so that's always nice. And then the Coffee with a Cop event, which pretty good turnout. Other than that, that's it.
Kurt?
Nothing to report tonight.
Paige?
Nothing to report.
Mark?
Nothing to report.
And I have nothing to report either. It's been a quiet two weeks. Information consent calendar. We pulled item F6, Consumna Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Agreements. Mr. Winkler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. We asked this be pulled from consent. Just this morning, we received a requested amendment from Sacramento County to Section 13 of the Cost Share Agreement. You should have a one-page sort of errata handout. We're adding a phrase to the disputes clause that would allow for optional voluntary use of an independent mediator should there be some disagreement among the parties to the cost share agreement at some point in the future. And it's just to give a little more flexibility on, before we go down the legal path, that we have the opportunity to voluntarily agree to arbitration or mediator services in the dispute resolution phase. Other than that, we would recommend you approve both, ratify the framework agreement, which is how the seven groundwater sustainability agencies will work together to put together a groundwater sustainability plan over the next 18 to 24 months for our basin, the Consumna Sub Basin, and that you also approve the cost sharing agreement as amended.
So, Steve, in looking at the cost share agreement, so it's $25,000 a year for the next four years from the city, correct? So I'm assuming the Clay Water District, they're only, they're, they're a small, they're a much smaller district, I understand. Is the reason that Sac County Department of Water Resources is paying more than theirs, is that to make up for Clay Station or the Clay Water District?
Yeah, a number of these smaller districts within the sub basin just don't really have a budget.
Mm-hmm.
They barely, you know, have, have the ability to sort of cover their ongoing requirements. None of them actually purvey water. They just help with the water rights within their particular area. And so as such, they really don't have any water rates or any other revenue other than a little bit of a property tax increment that they receive from the county. So even these $8,000 shares that you see in our staff report, in some cases, was up to or more than 50% of their annual budget, just, just to participate in this. So Sac County has offered to help cash flow those. The reason that the city's cost share, a third recommended act tonight is to approve a budget adjustment of $50,000 within the water fund to pay our fair share. That's actually an accelerated payment to help the county with the cash flow of some of these smaller districts that we'd sort of recommend that we accelerate our four-year payments over the next two years to allow the county to be able to work with some of the smaller districts. It's within our budget either way coming out of reserves. So that was an offer we put on the table, subject to your approval.
So it's coming out of the '05 fund?
Pardon me?
The money's coming from the water?
The Water Enterprise Fund, correct.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
Move to adopt the resolution ratifying the basin agreement. And two, authorize city manager to execute the cost sharing agreement. And three, authorize supplemental budget appropriations, $50,000.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Information consent calendar. Minutes of the regular meeting of August 21st, 2018. Receive and file warrants for the period ending August 22nd, 2018. City council meetings of November 20th, 2018, and January 1st, 2019. Galt Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding with Revised Salary Schedule. Five, police rifle trade-in and purchase. And seven, Injury and Illness Prevention Program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Regular calendar. Public Works Department, subject Authorization of Contract Change Order Number Seven for the South Galt Safe Route to School and Rehabilitation in Sacramento Area Council of Governments Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Project. Mr. Winkler?
Madam Mayor and council members, Mr. Clarkson, our deputy director, will be making a brief presentation, and you should have a copy of the PowerPoint handouts before you.
Mayor, council, it's not working. Then I'll just speak a little bit louder. I can, I can usually do that. We, um...
There it goes.
We're going now. We're flying. We have this project out there that we have just been tearing everything up for the last four months or so, and we've shown this map before and all the different color codes of what we're doing out there, where we're getting the funds and everything, mostly in the, from Lincoln Westward there. And we've been working at nights and daytimes and weekends and trying to avoid as many problems as we could, but we've also caused a few problems out there by having to shut down some streets like Lincoln a couple of times and a few others out there. And we've, we've put in all kinds of ramps out there, nearly a little over 200 ramps, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of infill, a lot of pedestrian things that we've been putting out there. And during the period, we've been doing a pavement management index review. They were kind of going parallel. So we were looking at what our pavement out there needs, the standards of the needs and everything else. And, and, and when we were doing the project, we saw that we needed some things. We were kind of in the area to do some improvements. And we, back in June, we kind of knew what we wanted to do, but we wanted to make sure the contract was going to be able to support it and the contractor was going to get done on time, and we didn't want to mix anything up that we wanted to do with and needed to do with this project. So I kind of took all the color out to show you. The black there is all the streets that we've done, street surface improvements, the pavement, either microseal, digouts, or a combination of things. Comes out to about 15 miles, almost 10% of the whole city lanes that we have. It's 15 lane miles, and we have about 180 lane miles. So almost 15%, quite a bit out there. And this project was just terrific. We've been able to do a few things out there. Our, our contingency, we're only about 3% over the total budget, or the original construction budget. And what we saw is we've got some improvements that we need to do to First Street. We've done one end on the southern end that we improved. That was part of the contract. Well, not really part of the contract, but it, it, we added a few things to make sure that we didn't get a rough road out there. And we ended it right short of doing all of the road, and the whole road would have taken another $200-plus thousand, and that's what we're here for now. The original contract price was a little over $5 million. He gave us a contingency authorized of 700, or close to 780,000. Today, our change orders have expanded about 154,000. That's at 3% of the contract price, but about 30% of the original contingency. So we're, we're well under the contingency. We've done really good out there. Our staff, the consultant, the contractor, George Reed and Sons, been excellent out there of doing the work, getting it done on time and getting things completed. So we went and we started negotiating for contract change order number seven. What we get out of it is, a year ago, close to a year ago, we opened bids. They said that they would honor those bid prices that are almost a year old now and that, that they would honor it. We've came up with what our calculations, we think of change order number seven's going to be, and that would, that would do all the repairs of digouts and stuff and get an overlay, similar to what you see right there. This was on C Street that we did similar there, where we did digouts and came in with an overlay when we were done. And that will lock up all of, all of First Street right there. And, and I think it'll be a, a nice finish for this project. We still are well under, well under the contingency, authorized contingency. And we, we still have a couple of small change orders to do, but they're in the $10,000 and $15,000 range, just to finish out some of the project. So our new construction contract price that we're asking you for is about 5.6 million, right in there. And we have, one of the reasons why we came besides the, getting the contract change order at the price of almost, of the bid from almost a year ago, was also because of funding that we had for Measure A to SB 1 that provided to us. And that, and, and I think that's where we're gonna, we get a, an ability and a, a cost savings to go ahead and do that right now. The contractor is waiting as we talk, willing to get out there and do this thing pretty quick, within, in less than a week after we authorize him to go. Now, you see the recommendation? Leprechaun put that picture on the right. I didn't touch that picture. And our velocipede lane there. And just in case of those who haven't seen this lane out, that's what it is. It's a bike lane, just in case of you haven't seen that out there. It's kind of, it's kind of low color, you know, so. Anyway, are there any questions?
So if I understand this correctly, we're basically, you're doing it again. You're coming in under budget.
Absolutely. It's been a good job. There's been really good people on this job.
Well, you did that with the wastewater treatment plant, and now you're doing it again, Mark.
Yeah, it's, we've got a good staff out there.
So we're able to come in under budget and be able to do, finish some other, do some more project because of it?
Even without, even with, without the change order seven, we've done extra stuff on the project. We've changed some things and we've, we've negotiated some lower prices that weren't part of the contract, and, and so we've done some really good things out there, like C Street in front of the school and extending some stuff on Cost and New Hope and a few other things. So we were able to do a few, a few additional things out there, just, just with what we've spent today, which is, it's just remarkable with, again, with George Reed and Sons, our, our inspectors, our current staff, and of course, the citizens who've paid for all of this, so.
Great job.
Mind you have one comment. Probably you're getting a pretty good deal on this change order also because of the startup costs that they don't have, because they're already here.
Absolutely. There is no cost, there's no mobilization, there's nothing.
Yeah, exactly.
Involved in it.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes, please. Real quick, so the sidewalks were already finished on that portion of First Street, correct? All we're doing is the final with the road, kind of cleaning it up?
Yeah, from, I forget the name of the road, but when we...
Road Creek.
Okay. We did some new sidewalks down in here and some sidewalks up in here. And so this is going to tie it in all the way up to New Hope with New AC. So when you go on First Street, right after you do the turn on F Street, it's going to be new from that point forward. It's going to be good for 15 to 20 years, right?
Awesome. Thanks, Mark.
And maybe just further on that is, yes, all the sidewalk and curb ramp work is done. We got a nice new south end, a little bit bumpy toward, as you approach New Hope headed north. We saw this an opportunity with great bid prices, a willing contractor, to sort of leverage our Measure A and our, and our SB 1 funding and accelerate this under these old bid prices and get more work done for less cost. And certainly if we had to go back out to bid to do this, we'd probably pay more coming back.
Awesome.
Oh, yeah, and the, and the weather, too. Timing is pretty good towards it.
Timing's key. They're ready to do it.
Yeah.
So if you approve it tonight, they're going to probably start working tomorrow.
Any further questions? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Campion. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote.
Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Can I indulge everyone? Samantha, I know, I know Rivka wasn't here during your presentation. You want to come up and introduce her? I just think it's great if everyone can meet you, Rivka.
She doesn't really need any introduction. This is Rivka Sass. She is our library director extraordinaire, Sacramento Public Library.
Thank you. I'm so disappointed that I missed Samantha's presentation, because I specifically wanted to thank you, Mayor Huer. Thanks to the swim passes that you made available here to kids in Galt, we got the entire city council in Sacramento on board, and they were pretty reluctant. But when we said, "Well, Galt's doing it," then they felt they had to do it. So thank you, Galt, and thanks Samantha and the great crew at, at the Galt Library for it being a really successful year. She's extraordinary.
She is.
Thank you all very much.
Well, thank you for coming down.
Thanks.
Thanks. Oh, Mr. Winkler, consideration of new collection services agreement with California Waste Recovery Systems?
Mayor, I'm going to start us off on this item and then turn it over to Steve. Just a brief intro on, you know, council sent us on a journey about a year ago to work with Cow Waste in renegotiating our franchise agreement. It's been quite a journey. It's, we worked with Cow Waste in exchanging quite a bit of information, crunching a lot of numbers. Tonight, you're going to hear about that journey and, and what's in this franchise agreement. A few acknowledgements, have a lot of respect for Cow Waste and the Vakaraza family, Dave, Rudy, and Casey. They run quite a business. They do quite a bit of service to our community, and it's been a pleasure working with them. And also Jack Fiore, the chief operating officer, so thank you at the city. You know, just recognizing Steve, he project managed this. Weekly meetings, a lot of discussions. Also had Carlos Solaro in our Public Works Department. Adrian Carlos, he's in the audience tonight, sitting with us and doing, you know, quite a bit of work. Richard Torga Irwin, who's with R3 Consulting, and he's also here to answer some questions, I believe doing some presentation as well. And then also Joshua Nelson from Best in Best Krieger, his attorney, kind of experts in solid waste contracts. And then, of course, Kimberly and I were sitting at the table and working with the franchise agreement. And of course, Councilmember Campion and Lamson were involved in several meetings, providing us direction and just bouncing off ideas, and we really appreciate your time and effort into this. We believe that this is a sound contract proposal that is fair for both Cow Waste and the city, and the residents and businesses we serve. While the rate increases are never desirable, they are unavoidable. The services levels are, are to be maintained, and compliance with pending new state mandates are, are to be achieved. So you're going to hear a lot about that, you know, this evening as Steve and the team give their presentation. I'm going to turn this over to Steve for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. Palazzo. You know, I probably would preface my comments with, there were no high fives around the room after we were done with the better part of a year of negotiations. I think everybody felt like they had to give some, and everybody walked away feeling like the deal is, is, is fair, but, but tough. You know, city had to look out, not only for the city's interests, but also for our ratepayers' interests, and I'm sure Cow Waste feels like we've got about as much blood out of the turnip as we can in the face of the mandates ahead. And bear with us, council, as much for yourself and as the audience is, we're going to use a little bit of a workshop session here format, and then we'll bring back a recommendation, which if you're comfortable, after receiving any questions or comments, moving forward with the contract, we'll be recommending that you consider approving the contract as presented. If the council needs more time, you know, we're, we don't want to rush into this and want to make sure that, that the city residents understand what's behind the various contract provisions, and we'll try to highlight those for you tonight. With that, Cow Waste has been with the city for in excess of 25 years as our franchise collector, sole source provider to the city, and have a reputation in the region for being among the highest caliber collectors and customer service providers and, and providing complete services of anyone in the region that I've heard. And they do serve multiple communities outside of Galt as well, and they're looking to sort of continue to grow that, that business pattern. I'm not going to read all the bullets on all the slides. It is important to note that they, Cow Waste has not received a rate increase in over five years, and as a result, that our customers, both residential and commercial, are receiving essentially well below market rate, rates over what the escalators and indexes would have otherwise provided to Cow Waste. They've voluntarily waived those, knowing that we were going to be negotiating and knowing that legislative mandates were kind of shifting sand over the last few years, and they wanted to see those solidify before they made a, a solid rate proposal back to us. And so with that, as Jean mentioned, you did direct us almost a year ago to the day to, to have a discussion with Cow Waste as an exclusive franchise provider, to see if we could come to an agreement. And after a lot of, a lot of meetings and a lot of time, we're here tonight with this proposal. These three bills that are up on the slide have occurred over the last five to six years in the state legislature and been signed into law by the governor, and they're sort of, I'm going to mix metaphors here, three legs to a perfect storm here. And AB 341 was passed in 2011, which was a sea change for the state of California, and it basically took the, the late, early 90s, there was a mandate to get 50% of our waste diverted out of landfills to, then the concern was primarily having enough landfill space. So more recycling programs, more, more reduction, you know, getting as much out of the landfill as it was reasonable to do so. Well, in 2011, that, that, the law was changed to take that from 50%, which is our current diversion requirement, to 75% within the next two years. And with, if you sort of look at it in terms of, we've picked the low-hanging fruit to get to 50%, now we've got to really stretch to get another 50% reduction on what we're already doing to get to 75%. So that's going to be challenging. It also implemented what we've already seen here in Galt and other communities is mandatory commercial recycling and organics recycling for customers with more than four cubic yards. The second leg of the, of the Perfect Storm was in 2014, AB Assembly Bill 1826 was passed, and that added a new layer of restrictions and is now, after April of 2016, is mandating that commercial customers, public venues, public entities, multifamily complexes of five or more units that produced eight or more cubic yards of refuse per week generated in their dumpsters would have to have a mandatory organics and/or food waste program, depending on what type of waste they were producing. In 2017, this past year, that dropped to anybody producing four or more cubic yards. And so all of a sudden, it got real for Galt, because most of our businesses weren't producing the large dumpster of organics, other than perhaps your landscape contractor types. And so now grocery stores, large grocery stores that have produce, you know, and, and there's a waste stream there, they're all required to either haul back or recycle those organics. Apartment complexes got sucked in this past year if they've got, you know, a significant number of units. So these are becoming more onerous, and the, the bill gives the State Department of Resources Recovery and Recycling the authority in 2020 to drop that mandate down to two cubic yards or more, which would then even hit small apartment complexes or maybe, you know, smaller units. So it also will pick up a lot more restaurants and things on the food waste end when you drop it down to that two cubic yards. So, so these are going to be difficult to meet, and are, all of these programs are going to cost money for Cow Waste to implement on the city's behalf. And the final sort of leg of the Perfect Storm here is Senate Bill 1383, passed in 2016, was signed into law, and similar to what AB 341 did, it targets the organics going to the... it targets the organics going to landfills. AB 341 was all waste. This is strictly looking at the organics and is going to require, within the next two years, that we divert of the organics that are currently going to landfills, 50% of those out of the landfills over the next two years, based on 2014 levels of production. And then, by 2025, that again also ramps up to 75%, and that's on top of the total waste diversion requirement. Food waste, green waste, and organics are sort of the uncharted territory in Northern California, if not statewide, and there just are not organics recyclers regionally available. And so, what is currently being used is alternative daily cover at the landfill. Instead of filling the landfill up with dirt each day when they got to cover the waste to keep the seagulls and rats and other vermin out, they were able to do it with green waste and not fill up our landfills with dirt. Now, no more. And the concern is legitimate, is that organics, when they break down in the landfill, that they produce methane primarily, which is a greenhouse gas, which causes concerns with global warming and other climate change effects. And under current state law, the governor is pushing for California to be a leader in reducing those greenhouse gases. So, well-intentioned, but it's going to be expensive to get there.
Steve, can you give us an example of what organics are?
So, organics are yard waste, green waste, brown waste, branches, food waste, basically anything that will decompose naturally. And so, you know, things that are thrown away today in your garbage receptacle, if you're in a commercial area, or if they impose mandates on the residential sector, which is an option by the year 2025, then we would need to probably work with Cow Waste to implement weekly collection in a separate container for yard, garden, and food waste, similar to what we're currently doing for recyclables generally, which is now currently every other week. If you mix food waste into that, it has to be collected weekly just from odors and vermin concerns. So, that would be another sea change. That is not currently a requirement for residential food waste, but that is one of the threats that is out there, that the legislature has authorized Department of Recycling to look at down the road if we fail to otherwise meet all of these requirements that you're hearing about. So, it's kind of a club that they're holding in a bay as the residential food waste component. However, residential organics, which you're currently able to put in your toter every other week, are targets to get them out of the landfill. So, Cow Waste will have to come up with a composter or a bio-waste digester firm, of which there are none within local hauling distance. Those markets are going to have to be developed to meet these mandates in the next two years. Or, Cow Waste is going to have to be compensated for trucking at long distances. Some people are trucking or railcar loading out of state to try to meet some of these diversion requirements. That's expensive.
And what's the penalty for, whoops, what's the penalties for not meeting these requirements?
They vary. I want to say $5,000 per day could be imposed on the local entity. You'll see in the slides ahead that...
For each component?
For various violations, yeah.
Local entity meaning the city?
Well, the city is going to be held responsible to comply. Talk a little bit more, as part of the agreement and the rates that are being proposed, Cow Waste would actually be indemnifying the city. They will implement programs needed to meet that if the city gets fined for failure to implement enough programs to meet the diversion. Then, Cow Waste will be sort of covering the city's sins, so to speak. As long as we've gone along with the programs they've recommended that are reasonable, they're going to basically hold the city harmless from those types of penalties. So, in addition to the legislative cycle, market factors are also in play. You might have heard about the China National Sword Policy over the last year or so, where literally China was taking probably upwards of 80% of the recycled market products, other than green waste, and they were being shipped or barged over, and then they would use those as feedstock to remanufacture recycled products or produce aluminum or steel or whatever with the recycled materials. Paper being a major product that would go to China, paper, newsprint, cardboard products. They basically cut off the United States over the last year due to concerns with contamination, such as food waste getting in with the cardboard, or dirty cans, or, you know, and green waste getting in with, you know, the wrong card at the wrong weekend, getting commingled in the truck. And interestingly, a recent study showed that Cow Waste had the highest, cleanest recycling of anybody that I've heard of in Northern California, that they were recognized by their peers. And I'll let them toot that horn a little later if they choose to. But even with all that they're doing, it was, more would need to be done to meet the Chinese National Sword Policy, and other nations are following suit in the international market. So, as a result, the value, the price that used to be paid for those products has tanked. And in many cases, when Cow Waste is now having to pay people to take the product, take the green waste and compost it, rather than they pay us, or the city or Cow Waste. The city and its customers and Cow Waste are now having to pay, in some cases, just to move the material so that it can be recycled. And so, that's a huge market factor. So, all of the programs we've touched on in the legislation are causing huge price increases statewide in the price of disposal and the extra cost for the extra handling for recycling. And that, of course, at the end of the day, means that our residential and commercial rates have to follow suit and reimburse those costs of meeting those regulations going forward. And rate increases are always difficult. We're certainly always reticent to do that. In large part, Cow Waste has held off for five years in any of their index rate increases. And so, we, you know, we're at the point where with these new regulations, we're going to have to pay the piper locally. So, the proposed contract provisions, I'm going to just kind of highlight what's different. We basically started with the current agreement we've had since 2007, which was a difficult, lengthy negotiated contract that is a very good template and has served the city of Galt well, and has been actually an example for other contracts in the region. And then, worked to, okay, how are we going to address these mandates and these new requirements? And major investments are going to need to be made by Cow Waste in new equipment. They've already purchased over $6 million worth of new trucks, of the split-body trucks, to do some of the recycling that's going to be necessary. They'll talk more about that. And I believe, not at me, yes, no, up or down, I think a new split-body garbage truck is in the order of magnitude of $400,000 each. And so, the initial term we're proposing is a 12-year base term that gives them time to amortize that. In addition, all new carts are going to be rolled out to all of our customers over the next year or so, millions of dollars involved in that rollout. So, we felt that an initial 12-year term would give them time to properly typically, garbage trucks are financed over a 10-year period. Built into the agreement is that if Cow Waste continues to own the company and operate the company and the contract, and continue to provide satisfactory services in compliance with the permit, they would be granted an automatic 10-year extension upon review at the 10-year mark of the first 12-year term. And then, we bring back information to council on their compliance and whatnot. And then, at the city's sole discretion, at the end of that 10-year period, if the council was so inclined, we've built in the option at city's sole discretion for a third extension or additional 10-year extension. In the event that Cow Waste during the first 12 years was to sell the company, that automatic 10-year extension with the asterisk there would be solely at the city's discretion and could be a re-opener on the contract with whoever they elected to sell the company to. Again, as mentioned earlier, Cow Waste would be responsible to kind of indemnify the city for meeting all these new known mandates. You know, the three bills in particular, that Cow Waste is prepared to implement programs to meet those requirements or cover any penalties the city might receive until they're able to meet that. The one sort of major change, we've had a historical problem, I should say Cow Waste has had a historical problem. A couple of the mobile home parks in town do not use bulk containers. They use individual carts for each of the units within the mobile home parks. Under old city policy, preceding when we went to master meters for the water meters for mobile home parks, we would allow, since it was a flat-rate type of thing, for apartment owners and for mobile home parks to have customers or tenants individually come to the city and open an account. In this case, Cow Waste is responsible for building that particular type of customer with the individual collection carts within mobile home parks. And there's a group out there, we also require mandatory collection. There is not an option to not have garbage collection within the residential units, including mobile home parks and apartment complexes. So, Cow Waste must collect it, but they're having an issue with collecting from a certain group of tenants who just refuse to pay their bills. Meanwhile, the city is mandating service for the rest of the customers so that they don't have rats and putrid smells and uncollected waste overflowing in carts. So, Cow Waste is kind of between a rock and a hard place as far as we're mandating that they collect it, but they're not being paid, and Cow Waste has no real effective tools, as the city does, to ensure collection. It'll be sort of, you know, bringing a lawsuit against each individual customer, which is very time-consuming and expensive. So, what we've proposed in the current contract or the new restated contract would be, the city would go ahead and take over the billings for those single-family, individual cart, mobile home parks, as we do with most of the other services in those parks. We would then bring to you a policy change that would require that those customers would become the owners or the managers of the mobile home parks, rather than the individual customers. We've already done that with water. I believe we've already done that with sewer as well, where the property owner is the customer, not the individual tenants. So, this would be just one more incremental change. We'd do public outreach with the few affected mobile home parks in town and give them time. This would commence in February of 2019, so over the next four to six months, if we move forward, we'd be reaching out to the select few customers that that would affect, and then working with their tenants so that they would also know that that was a change. And obviously, how would they do that? Well, they're going to want to raise the rent by the offset in the amount of the garbage bill, undoubtedly. So, we've got both tenants and property owners that are going to need to be advised of that, and we're working on outreach to that effect. Any questions on any of those provisions?
Those, so, those individuals that are in the mobile home parks now that are currently paying the city directly will instead be paying their property, paying the owner of the mobile home park?
Under the current, no, that's actually, I probably confused that a little bit for you. Under the current contract, Cow Waste is responsible for billing the mobile home parks.
Yes.
And we're proposing...
And they bill each individual, or they build the park as...
They're billing individuals in some cases, and they're billing park owners in other cases. They've got, we have about four mobile home parks, I think, in play here. And so, in those ones where they're billing individuals, there's a group of customers who have just refused to pay their bills, and at the same time, we're mandating that they continue to collect the garbage. So, we're trying to fix that loophole. The city would then have leverage over the property owner, as we do with all other property owners. If they don't pay their bills, you know, we can turn off water. Now, to a mobile home park, I would think that there's a little public health and safety issue there. So, we would be looking to probably put a lien on the mobile home park.
But our intention would be that those individuals in those mobile home parks, because a lot of those are senior parks, wouldn't really see an increase in, I mean, they're going to see the increase that all of us are getting.
Cow Waste would no longer bill the individual. The city would begin to bill the owner.
They wouldn't get billed, but they would get it probably included in their rent.
Right.
Their rent space.
I mean, I'm presuming, I mean, via the landlord's decision what he was going to do, but I'm sure that they will want to roll that into a rate increase for their tenants.
Hypothetically, the landlord shouldn't be tacking extra on above what the rate is?
I wouldn't think so, although the city doesn't have any review of that. Okay, additional terms. They will be rolling out, they currently have a bulky waste collection program where they will collect up to three and a half cubic yards twice a year in sort of a loose pile, and you make an appointment. They'll pick it up. Unfortunately, those piles tend to grow. We call it breeding, where other people start throwing in, or people start rummaging through, and then the pile gets spread out. That's become somewhat problematic. Parked out in front of City Hall on your way out, everybody can see, they've got actually one of the brand-new handy haulers. That is a three and a half cubic yard container, and customers, in lieu of this pilot on the street, would receive on an appointment basis, one of these handy haulers. They would get one of those a year, and that is the same volume that we currently take under the old contract, except it would have to fit in the container. They would then have a second, a bulky waste pickup that would not be containerized for things that would either be too heavy to lift into the bin, or would be a sofa, refrigerator, electronic waste and things. They wouldn't have to be containerized, but they would get the second three and a half cubic yard collection by appointment with Cow Waste. So, really no change, other than one of the two will be the new container, which they can then automate the pickup for. Don't have to send a truck with two or three guys to start loading all this into the back of a flatbed truck. Additionally, under the contract, and it's similar to the existing, is the city gets up to six city-designated community cleanups, or they'll provide a 20 cubic yard bin or smaller equivalents of that amount for up to six community cleanups designated by the city. So, if we wanted to do a creek cleanup, or we wanted to do a large neighborhood, something in a blighted area, we would have the ability to designate up to six events a year. And that could also be, maybe a part of, you know, Love Galt Parks or something other, where we got people out, you know, cleaning up ditches or cleaning up, you know, open space. You know, we could make that a designation. They'd drop a bin off, and then we could do a community cleanup event or something to that effect. So, that continues under this contract. And then, because of the long-term nature that we're proposing, you know, up to 22 years with Cow Waste initially, that they would keep their equipment in good repair, and that they would, upon a renewal of the extension, would replace their garbage collection trucks so we're not running around with 15- or 20-year-old beaters that are leaking hydraulic fluid, leaving streams down the street. Cow Waste has never had that problem. I won't say they've never blown a hydraulic hose, but they are right out there cleaning it up. They notify us immediately, and they have recently invested millions in the new trucks that we're seeing on the street today. They've also offered, and we've agreed to, that built-in to the contract is currently kind of what they're currently getting with the markets tanked on recyclables right now. Right now, they're currently getting approximately $230,000 a year from CRV-value recyclables, metals, aluminum, and things that they're able to cull out. We call that sort of the high-value materials, with very little revenue being associated with other traditional recyclables, plastics and things that aren't CRV-value, newsprint, cardboard. They are proposing to give 90% of anything above annually, the $230,000 level, would go into a sort of a rate stabilization fund. And we'll talk about rates a little later, but built into, after year three, would be an escalator. And this fund would go towards offsetting that annual escalator. Any revenue would be first applied to the escalator, and then residents would only be asked to fund any incremental amount that was left. So, we'd basically be giving 90% of the revenue above the current base amount back to the customers as part of offsetting future cost increases. We have built in some of these features, including up to a 22-year initial term, or unheard of, for if you were to go out to a public RFP and invite other competitors to come bid against Cow Waste, you'd probably have a 10-year contract, maybe 12, and that would be it. That would be what you would put in the RFP. Because of their exceptional customer service and support for the community, and the direction certainly of council to work with Cow Waste to bring this forward, built into that is some protection for the city that they don't turn around next week or next year and sell the company, when that was really the whole point of a long-term agreement with Cow Waste as the owner and operator. So, there are some penalties built in. If they were to sell the contract in the first five years, as noted on the slide... five years, as noted on the slide, uh, $3 million penalty in year one. Years two through four would be a million and a half dollar penalty for change of ownership or sale of the contract. And in year five, that would drop to 150,000. And those amounts would be in addition to, uh, sort of a, a due diligence fee of 150,000 if, uh, the city would be able to look at and review, uh, who they were proposing to sell the contract to, should they elect to do that at some point in the future, to make sure that they were going to be able to meet the requirements of the contract and, and were financially stable and that they have a good customer service record, uh, that they weren't just some startup that nobody had ever heard of, for instance. Um, and that would also, if they were to sell within the first 12-year term, uh, they would lose the automatic right to a 10-year extension for good performance. There are a few contract reopeners, um, material changes in law, like the three bills that we've seen the last six years, if the legislature and the governor continue to approve new mandates, obviously Cal Waste doesn't have a crystal ball as to, uh, you know, what they might require next. And so we have a re opener if there are substantive material changes in law. Um, extraordinary events, uh, natural disasters, uh, uh, if, uh, another similar something to all the local landfills closed and they had to start rail shipping out of state or hauling things, uh, you know, 200 miles instead of 30 miles to Kiefer landfill, those would be extraordinary events that are hard to foresee or predict and we don't want to build that risk into the rates. So we've agreed that, uh, we would revisit, uh, the costs if those, those, these types of things were to occur. If the city raises its franchise fee or its administrative fees, uh, those are pass-throughs to Cal Waste, so, uh, they would get, get reopeners to discuss those impacts. Um, and, uh, uh, if there was extraordinary migration, if everybody, uh, based on the proposed new rates over the next few years, if they were to flock to a smaller container, uh, the, the, the contract is premised on that people will predominantly keep the size service they have today, has major revenue impacts if they run to a smaller can size, which, which is fine if people will need to do that, uh, to balance their budget. But if it's a wholesale migration and there are limits built into the contract, um, uh, that materially affect the revenue stream, Cal Waste needs to operate, uh, that we could revisit that, they'd have to demonstrate what the actual costs and revenue losses were. Um, and, uh, lastly, uh, they are very interested in and have, uh, over the years been proposing, uh, they currently have a transfer station where they currently are. It's, it's housed completely indoors. They've expanded it, uh, services there twice. Um, they're looking at, uh, further expansion to meet all of these mandates. What do we do with all this green waste? Uh, what do we do, uh, with all this? Got to, we've got to go through the garbage with a finer tooth comb to get the contamination out. You know, that takes room, space, equipment and costs that go with that. So if and when they get a new, uh, transfer station, uh, cited and permitted and approved and, uh, ready to place into service, uh, that'll primarily probably have impacts on, uh, commercial rates, it might even be favorable impacts if they don't have to haul things, uh, that they're currently hauling all the way to Kiefer, they might be able to do some, some, uh, some, uh, bulking here, but, uh, in reality, what typically happens to meet these new mandates is that, that, you know, the cost of equipment is going to drive rates up over time. So again, those reopeners would be sort of on Cal Waste, uh, to request and to demonstrate, uh, legitimate need, uh, as part of any further rate discussions down the road. With that, um, I'm going to turn it over to Richard Degore Irwin. He's with our three consultants, uh, who's been assisting the city throughout this, uh, journey over the last, uh, six plus months, uh, for final negotiations. Uh, he's a rate expert that works, uh, primarily if not exclusively for public agencies and has negotiated, I've been on a team that's negotiated many of the Northern California service contracts, uh, for other municipalities around us. Richard?
Uh, good evening and, uh, Richard Degore Irwin of our three consultant and just for the absolute record, we only work for public agencies. We do not work for any private solid waste service providers, landfill operators, facility processing facilities. Um, in, in Steve's presentation, you kind of really talked about all the legislative changes and, and really it kind of to sum it up what it amounts to, the legislature has really kind of hit, really come down hard on the, on the local governments to say diversion is incredibly important, they passed new legislative changes and you can't opt out. So, uh, what, AB 341, the commercial recycling, mandatory commercial recycling, fundamentally a lot of the commercial customers didn't do it. If you look at the actual diversions come out of that, it's been fairly low, the commercial recycling hasn't taken off like everybody had anticipated it to be. Um, the AB, um, 1826, the commercial organics is the same thing because it was, it was mandatory, but it was on a subscription basis, there was no teeth in it. So what the legislature did is they passed SB 1383, which is a very, very big hammer. Um, they have got draft regulations out now that require fundamentally every franchise agreement in the state to be reopened and renegotiated to have services changed. So what you're doing now is you're really getting in yourselves in line to be in compliance for the next, hopefully 12-plus years. Um, and unfortunately, nothing's free. So it used to be recycling, oh, that's, that's, recycling's free, it's not free, the markets have tanked, the costs have gone up, contamination of recyclables has to be about basically half percent or less to be accepted, which if you turn the clock back, that's the 1990s, that's how we used to do it 20 years ago. Recyclables have gotten very contaminated, they're being rejected, the revenue has dropped to be in, you're, you're now paying to get rid of recyclables. Significant amounts of your commercial recyclables are fiber, you can't get rid of it, you're paying to get rid of it. So, so that whole revenue, uh, equation that used to be credited back in the rates is gone, there's just nothing there. The organics, the same way, um, composting is more expensive than alternative daily cover, substantially more expensive. At the end of next year, your, your diversion credit, your, your, your alternative daily credit goes away. If that goes away, then you've lost about 4,000 tons of diversion off, off of your compliance in the state. So you, you'll fundamentally be non-compliant at the end of next year if you don't make changes. That's the bad news. The good news is working with, with Cal Waste, I think they've done a really good job putting together a game plan to get the city in a good place to be in compliant today, tomorrow and the next day. What we put together and it's in the contract is kind of two sets of diversion requirements. Franchise diversion is what they are required contractually to meet of what they collect within the city. The Cal Recycle diversion is really how it's measured on a citywide basis to make sure the city stays in compliance on, on the state level. They calculate those differently. Cal Waste runs on tons collected. We can measure that, they collect this much trash, this much organics, this much recyclables, pretty simple math to figure that out. Uh, Cal, uh, Cal Recycle, the state agency calculates it on a, an allowable pounds per disposal per day per capita. And so you have to kind of convert both, both around. So right now, the city is in compliance with the Cal Recycle state goal of 50%. As that goal increases over the next several years, you will not be in compliance without making changes to your programs. So what's laid out here is kind of a sequential evolution of those programs to get you in compliance. What we tried to do is to balance what's really necessary as we see it in terms of regulations with, with, with really trying to keep the customer rates as low as possible given the programmatic changes. There are a couple of programs that are not in your current agreement or the, the proposed agreement that sometime in the next 10, 12 years you may have to look at. One, I think Steve alluded to is what happens if Cal Recycle says you must have residential food waste? If you put the residential food waste in with a green waste can, that could very well make you collect the green waste weekly. That's a, will be a substantial cost increase as well. There is a pretty raging debate going on within Cal Recycle whether they're going to make that requirement happen or not. Because that is unsettled, we did not think is appropriate to put that in as a required program. Why pay for something unless you really have to? Um, the other one is additional processing, it's called dirty MRF processing of taking the, the garbage and sending it to a processing facility to have more recovery pulled out of it. That would get you more diversion, it's very expensive, we don't think you need to do that, so we're again suggesting, don't do these things unless you absolutely have to. Program they've laid out, I think will get you into compliance for the foreseeable future within the rate base that is within the realm of possibilities. Um, so again, things are also in the contract that they're, they're going to be providing recycling specialists to go out and educate your, your, your residents, your businesses, multifamily, the schools on what to do, what, where, what, what is a recyclable material today was not what it was 10 years ago, it's, it's going to change again. Question we always ask, what do you do with a pizza box? Where does it go? It changed. Honestly, you could ask anybody here, you're going to get different answers. Does it go in the recycling can? Well, if it's clean. Does it go in the organics can? Well, maybe it goes in the trash can, right now it goes in the trash can. It's only you could safely put it without it being contaminated. All those things are, are occurring. Um, they are doing outreach and school education for, for the schools, which is a good, very good program, start there, the schools will sign up with that. The school program is not part of your franchise agreement, that's not a franchise service. The schools can franchise or contract with any entity they want to. I think they're doing it with Cal, Cal Waste. They're doing that as a public education outreach as part of their overall program, which is a very good thing because usually the kids bring it home, tells the parents what to do. It's, it's pretty effective. Um, recycling programs and organics program at your city buildings, very aggressive there. Um, one of the new changes is all of your reci, your commercial customers will have a recycling cart as part of their base rate, just the standard service. It's like your residential u, service, residential customers have organics, recyclables and trash, your commercial businesses will have a recycling cart as part of their base services. There's no excuse for them not to participate. If they want a larger volume than 96 gallon, they can subscribe to that. Um, organics offered to all commercial businesses. Again, there's a tiering on when that has to happen, but effectively in, starting in 2020, the majority of your, your commercial customers are going to have to have organics collection as part of their, of their, their program. When that occurs, i- if they can reduce their trash volume, it's an offset. So if they go from a four cubic yard, uh, trash cart to a three cubic yard trash cart but have more recycling organics, then that will effectively help negate total rate increases. So it's not just a plus, 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 it may be a couple of minuses and a plus. So that's part of what their outreach is going to be doing. It also ties into, uh, their, uh, commercial, um, they are going to go out and do onsite waste audits of all the businesses to make sure that they're right sized, if you will, they're not oversubscribed or they're not subscribed to the wrong type of programs. Very common, it'll help again getting those customers, particularly the, the commercial customers really online with what they need to do. A big one is all the organics have to go to compost facility effectively, you know, end of next year in order to get diverted credit. That is a, unfortunately, that's an expensive activity. In order to get the diversion credit has to be compost, so you can't use it as alternative daily cover anymore. Um, I think that's kind of all of those. The other thing is they're going to be supporting, and this is some of the 18, SB 18, uh, 1383 regs that you're going to be getting hit with, um, food bank, food recovery, the city has to participate in that, you have to participate with the county, Cal Recycle stepping up to also participate in that. So it is, it's an ongoing program. Uh, Cal Recycle has, has, Cal Recycle State Agency has, has targeted a 20% recovery of that over the next several years, so it's another, it's another big thing you're going to have to be doing. Um, Cal Waste has stepped up and said, we'll help do that. Very good for them to do that. And they've also put in place a business recycling award program, this, the businesses that have the most recycling, they're going to go out and, and kind of recognize them and reward them. Now we talked about the cost side of it. Um, I think Steve had mentioned the capital costs for the collection vehicles and collection carts, about $6 million on a citywide basis. And it's on a basically a 12-year depreciation schedule. It'll go again in another, you know, 10 or 12 years, you have to be replacing those vehicles again. Um, about $500,000 is an additional wage benefit cost over, and a lot of this is legislative changes that have occurred to, to keep the employees workable and happy. Um, additional public education outreach costs about $150,000 a year more than it is now. That's a substantial budget and that's, that is really necessary to get the diversion programs to work correctly. Um, the, the organics program costs about 85% more than it does now. Okay, so I, I think organic cost is in the $30 per ton range, so pretty much double it, plus the collection side as well. So it's a, it's an expensive program. Uh, the recycling markets, you know, 30% uh, is, is really the, the cost, the additional cost to process. What, what Cal Recycle or Cal Waste has done, which other MRF operators have done, is they've had to slow the processing lines down, they've had to slow the facilities down to allow more physical picking out of the contaminants. So they're not getting the same amount of throughput within the same time, so they have to take a lo, longer time to process the recyclables, the cost goes up. Along with that, the revenue that they've received is not just Cal Waste, it's all the vendors statewide, the revenue they've, they've received from the recyclables has dropped about 50%. And the revenue used to be 10 to 15% credited back as in terms of the rate base, it's gone. So I think Steve said how we've kind of set that up in the contract, if markets come back up, that will get credited back in terms of future rate increases. So I think we have it pretty well protected for the future, but right now, markets are just, uh, they're, you know, in some cases they're below zero or you're paying to get rid of it. Okay? Um, another piece I think that, I think Steve men, alluded to, it's been about five years since Cal Waste has received a rate increase. That's a long period of time to go without a rate increase. Um, we would strongly recommend that if they voluntarily try to do that in the future, you might want to question whether they want to do that because what happens, at one point, there's a pretty big rate reset. And that's really kind of one of the things that's going on here now. If you look at, at the, the rates, what's proposed, um, you've got, the, the biggest bump really is the 20 gallon customer rates. Uh, and the reason that's the biggest bump, one, you don't have a lot of customers there is part of it. And in reality, the cost to pick up a 20 gallon cart, a 32 gallon cart, a 64 gallon or 68 gallon cart or 96 gallon cart is roughly the same, it's very little differential. And the, the actual cost of a 20 gallon cart to purchase is more than the 38 gallon cart. So it's a, it's actually a higher cost service. Most communities throughout the state are really reassessing the need for 20 gallon cart because it's great if everybody is doing it right and there's no contamination, there's no overflow, but what happens is a lot of the folks that have the smaller carts, if they run out of capacity for the garbage, it goes in the recycling cart or goes in the organics cart and you have contamination. So that's, those are the customers that are going to probably get the biggest pinch going forward. Um, there is a three-year phase in, we looked at a lot of different ways and how, how can we do this to make it as less painful? Um, anytime you do a phase in, there, there is, there's an offset. If you have it, you can just do it all at once and you could save a little bit of money over the contract term, but it's a large increase here. You could spread it out, stretch, stretch it out over several years, but then what happens is in, in years five, six, seven and eight, you're, you really have, um, in essence, an over collection of revenue back to Cal, Cal Waste. So they would be collecting more than they really should have received. So we kind of did a lot of analysis with them and backed it into kind of a, the residential rates, sort of a three-year phase in. And on the commercial, well, on, on a comparative basis, um, I didn't put the 20 gallon cart comparison up here because I think you guys in the Sacramento area are the only ones that have a 20 gallon cart, so there's no one in the 20 gallon in this region to compare with. That's, you know, red flag number one, there's a reason for that. So just, just, you know, keep that in mind. Um, but it, but if you look at your current rates and your proposed rates, yeah, there's a bump. And if you look at the Sacramento metro area, your rates are going to be a little higher than the Sacramento metro area. But if you look at Northern California as a whole, you know, from San Francisco all the way in, uh, your rates are pretty comparable to the lower, to, than those rates. A lot of the Bay Area communities, the Northern California communities, they've already started the programs they're going to be getting. So they've kind of started hitting, hitting those higher rate increases. The, the more recent procurements we've seen that we've done, the rates have been on the higher end, much higher than what you have here. So one of the concerns we had, whether you go out, you negotiate, you go out to competitive bid, you don't know what you're going to get. You go out to competitive bid, you might get a great rate or you may just get taken to the cleaners, there's not much you can do about it. Um, again, the rates that we've seen from competitive proposals are higher than what you have here. So we, we thought this was a, you know, it, as, as Steve said, you got about as much blood out of the turnip as you can get on this one. In terms of the commercial rates, very similar, um, we did, there's some, you know, phased increase, the commercial customers, when we looked at some of the, you know, the financials and looking at where's, where, what's, what's wrong today, fairly clear the commercial customers are substantially under market and it's probably not even covering the cost of the service. And, and that's, that's just sort of the painful, painful reality of it. So the, the commercial customers are going to take a larger bump. A lot of the new legislation, legislative changes are really focused on the commercial sector. So they are now going to be going forward, are going to have to really pay for their fair share. Uh, similar when you do a, a market comparison to Sacramento area, many of the communities in Sacramento greater area, the commercial market is an, it's a, it's a permit system, non-rate regulated, so you just don't have a lot of rate, of comparative rates to compare to. You have a couple outliers, uh, West Sacramento has very, very, very low commercial rates and it kind of skews it all down. So when you look at it from a Northern California standpoint, about 75 different communities, it's very, very close to what we see typically on, on, on a larger market area. it's very, very close to what we see typically on, on a, on a larger market area. So we, we, we thought we were pretty comfortable with what they proposed, looking at their financials, looking at the market rates. Again, it's, it's not, it's not pretty to see, but it is reality. And with that, I'll give it back to Steve.
So thank you for your patience. We're, we're on the home stretch for the audience as well. This has been, it's an important issue. We're talking about possibly the next 22 years if, if we move forward. And so it's important that everybody sort of understand what's, what's driving the contract provisions and what are the implications for Galt and our residents and our customers. No rates may be imposed that affect property rights, in this case services to properties under California law adopted in 1996 was one we affectionately call Proposition 218, which was dubbed, self-dubbed the Right to Vote on Taxes Act of 1996. And it gives our rate payers and property owners a say in what the city can ultimately charge. And then if, if the property owners don't approve through either a ballot or a majority protest process the proposed rates, then the city's only recourse would be to reduce levels of service and come back with, with something different. In this case, we are recommending that we do not reduce our levels of service, that we in fact are going to be increasing levels of service to meet these new mandates. That will require that property owners and customers approve through a majority protest process, those new proposed rates that you just saw some examples of. The process would be that we would give, we'd set a public hearing, which you're recommending, that you authorize us to do tonight, and that we would then 45 days or more before that public hearing, we'd send out notices as we have in the past with water and sewer and other services. 45 days minimum in advance, giving them the reason for the rate increases, explaining what are the proposed rates and how they would apply to them as a customer. Advising of the date, time, and place for a public hearing, and we're proposing January 15th for the public hearing here in City Hall. And that we also need to advise of the procedures if they wish to file a protest. Under state law, it requires a written protest, which can be submitted up until the close of the public hearing that would ultimately be set. Again, majority protest rules apply to water, sewer, and refuse collection rates, which would require that a majority of the customers protest the proposed rates to block them. And if we, that were to occur, the city would be barred or prohibited from implementing the rate increases. We'd have to sit back down and renegotiate further with Cal Waste and reduce levels of service or something to, to stay within the currently approved rates. That would be, probably put us in great jeopardy as far as meeting the new state mandates we've spent the last half hour plus talking about. With that, I'd like Cal Waste to talk a little bit about the programs that they'll be offering under the new proposed rates and so that people understand what new services they'll be getting. And here speaking for Cal Waste is Rudy Vacarezza, co-owner.
Hello, everybody. Oh, right click, alright, got it. Hello, everybody. Like Steve said, I'm Rudy Vacarezza and I'm here representing Cal Waste for tonight's presentation. I'd like to first thank the council for having us here to consider this proposal tonight. It's been a long time coming, as Steve and Gene have said. I'd also like to recognize Gene and his staff and his team for working with us over the last six to 10, two, five years, however long it feels, to get this done. But they did a great job and I'd also like to recognize Kimberly and Josh working on legal side with, with our attorney and us as well. So I guess we'll, we'll jump into it. So we had a, oh, sorry, let me pick these up real quick. So as you, you've kind of heard tonight, a lot of these new mandates that Steve and Richard has talked about have kind of been focused around diversion and keeping recyclables out of the landfill as well as organic waste. And it's kind of the post-secondary processing side of it that's really going to see the biggest hit. And like currently in, in the city of Galt, we've experienced, we haven't had a rate increase in five years. We've, we've held off over the last five years, kind of like, like Richard said, to get this rate reset, but we know that this is where we need to be today. And in this proposal, it kind of involves a few different elements and Steve's touched on pretty much everything involved in it, but I just wanted to kind of elaborate on a few different things. So currently in the city of Galt, they have a 64 gallon tra-- brown trash cart is the basic service level. Then you have a 64 gallon recycling cart, green recycling cart, and a 96 gallon gray yard and garden cart. But as you can see, these are the proposed new basic service levels in front and behind me. There's some different colors up there. There's some bigger cart sizes as well. So as you can see, there's, there's big blue pops now. I mean, this isn't a color that you guys have seen out in your streets before, but the state of California in 1383 has actually mandated that all new, or all carts that are put out from now on have to be a certain color scheme. So the thought process behind that is that it kind of promotes their message of reaching these 75% diversion goal. So say you're at a, a day trip up at Angel's Camp and you have a, a bottle or a can that you need to recycle, you walk by a cart, you see a blue cart, you know that's recycling. But in the city of Galt, it's green. So how would you know? So that, this is Cal Recycle's effort to get everybody on the same scheme and to market that big 75% method and to get to that goal because it's going to be harder and harder for every crumb that we, we get out of the waste stream. So that's the side of the, the whole different colors and every resident is going to get a brand new cart. So all three carts will be replaced. Some of these carts have been out there for 15, 20 years. It's about time for some of them. They've held up very well. We're using the same brand of carts actually. The company is, it's a great company that we've worked with over the years. But the big change in the carts that you're going to get is going to be that now you're going to get this 60 or 96 gallon big blue recycle cart. So previously you had a 64 gallon cart. So that's pretty much an increase in capacity of 50%. And at, at the transfer station, we see a lot of recyclables making their way into the trash cart. And we believe that in creating this bigger capacity for your recycle cart, because it's bi-weekly service, that hopefully we'll be able to transition those recyclable materials in your trash cart to your recycle cart. But we totally understand that it's, in our industry, it is not a build it and they will come. I mean, just because it's a bigger recycle cart does not mean we're going to recycle more necessarily. So it's a combination of things and programs, but it's really focused on public outreach and education and informing people through any way that you can of what goes in which cart and how they can reduce their waste the most and be most effective. And our, I guess plug we're going to do is that our newest, shiniest thing that we do is this, we have, Cal Waste now has an app. It's actually, you can download it on any of the platforms that you download apps on and it's called Cal Waste Recycles Right. I mean, if you just search Cal Waste, it'll pop right up. It's pretty cool. It's a, it's got some features from viewing your collection day, it can send you a reminder via email, text. I don't think it does phone calls, but yeah, emails and texts. I don't know, you never know these days, but. And then, but the, one of the biggest features that we use that can help us get to this 75% goal and get everything into the recycling can that we really need is this Waste Wizard. So this feature is something that say you have a juice box and you don't know where to throw a juice box away or which, which cart, it goes in your trash or your recycling. It's kind of made of paper, it's a little waxy. So if you type it in the Waste Wizard, it'll tell you where it kind of goes. And for the more popular items, it gives you a description as to why it goes there. Like in a juice box, there's tin foil wrapping on the inside of the paper container and then the glue that's used on it, they're the melting points, blah, blah, blah. So essentially it goes in the trash. And I mean, you can go from everything from, like the pizza box is the classic example. If it's soiled, it goes in the trash. If it's clean, it goes in the recycling. So the Waste Wizard is something that we've used as an outreach tool to kind of reach everyone in general without having to touch them directly. One feature that we do use on it that's unique, I think, is, is these commonly searched items and we, we go in and we update and we check it periodically. So if something is commonly searched more and more, then we know to use that in our outreach material in the long run or even seasonally such as wrapping paper. And it's just items that we can put in our newsletter and our updates and it's, it's a good tool that we've had. But the other side of the outreach and education is actually going into schools. And we actually have in accredited, or no, sorry, there's a typo up there. It's not accredited. It's a approved curriculum by the Galt School District and it's in the elementary schools. We actually employ three teachers that go into second and third grade classrooms in the Galt Elementary Schools. And they do kind of a recycling 101, three-session course. In the second grade, they kind of focus on the basics, like the three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle, what it, how you recycle, what you can recycle. And then in fourth grade, it goes a little bit more in depth about how impacts of your, how the impacts of what you do and how you recycle can have on the environment around you. It's built on common core standards. It's ended up after, I believe the fourth graders, when they're finished with the three sessions, they get a tour out at Cal Waste, they come out to our facility. We kind of try to close the loop so they can really see where everything that they're putting in their recycling can ends up. It's a hit. We've had, I don't know, 20,000 kids at one point over the last four or five years come through and kind of see what we do from the post-secondary processing side of it. It's something that kind of gets forgotten a lot, but it's something that we've utilized. And then not only that, through the academic side of it and kind of book learning about it, but we try to make it practical also. So we go into the schools and we have programs set up through the administrators, all the way down to the custodial staff, to where they are actually have recycling programs in each classroom. And then we bring it out even to the lunchroom to where they're actually sorting their food waste and they have food waste collection in, in the Galt schools. So it kind of, as I think Richard or Steve said, it kind of, the kids become the avid recyclers recyclers and they kind of bring that on as the next generation and hopefully pass that on to their kids and in their product choices or as you would like to say in the future. So it kind of closes the loop and it gets everybody on board. I think the outreach is something that is forgotten a lot and we at Cal Waste think we, we do a really good job with it. But the other side of the outreach isn't just schools and kids and residents, it also has to do with the commercial businesses. As Richard said, the AB 341 mandates that all commercial businesses participate in a recycling program if they're over a certain threshold. And that, that applies also to food waste. And so we utilize something we've done in other districts, it's called like a strike team, to where we get out to pretty much every commercial business and conduct these waste audits that Richard spoke to a little earlier.
Rudy, just a question before you go on to this. So back where the, it showed the picture of the carts. So we're no longer going to have two, sometimes you have two green waste or two recycle carts. We're just going to have these three carts.
So you can, so you'll still have these three carts, but you can, you still have the option of a second recycling cart.
Okay.
Yeah. And you will also have the option of a second green waste cart as well.
Okay.
So the, the options are still there.
The options are still.
Yeah. And I, I want to point out that the 64 gallon is the basic trash service. You can choose your can size. You can choose anything from the 38 to the 64 to the 96 and the rates vary depending on that, but the.
So you'll still have the option, but you'll have two 96 recycle, one.
Yes. Yeah, you'll have two.
Or two green what?
Yeah, or two green waste.
Okay. Thank you.
Exactly.
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, yeah, no problem. So going back to our commercial recycling element of this and our expanded commercial programs is an element that Richard touched on is that now with your commercial trash service that you have, as you will also receive a free 96 gallon big blue recycling cart. That will then get your business and the city into compliance with this three, AB 341, which is mandatory commercial recycling programs. We believe this is a, is a big element and it, without having to go and say, you need to go have a, now you have to have a one-yard recycling trash service. No, you, you have the option, you have the 96 gallon, you're in compliance, but if we can do a waste audit, we can further assess your recycling needs. If you feel like you need more recycling, then we, we have more options that's shown below it that you can have as well, but it's not part of the complimentary service. And the strike team, we've, like I said, we've done it before. It's something that's worked well. You can, as, as Richard said, if you have that six-yard trash service, you can really bring it down to maybe four yards trash and a couple of yards of recycling as well. So some of the operational sides that have changed is that we're using these split body trucks, which we spoke about earlier. It's a automated collection vehicle. It's split right down the middle. It's a one-pass truck. So instead of having your trash picked up in the morning and your recycling in the afternoon by the same truck that went and dumped, it's all in one pass. One truck goes by your house, picks up both commodities at the same time, packer throws the trash one way, dumps the next cart, packer switches the other way, throws the trash onto the other side. It's much more efficient. It saves wear and tear on the streets, but big thing for us is it's a safety mitigator. We only have to drive down your street one time, drive by your new car one time.
[laughter]
It's just something that adds safety in all elements of our operation as well as efficiencies also. And then the, the next element is the handy hauler service that was spoke about earlier. And it really cleans up the process of these bulk waste cleanups that need to, that are being put out on the street. I don't know if you guys have ever driven down a street on a bulky waste cleanup day, but it's like just stuff everywhere and, you know, piles getting added on to like Steve was saying. And it can be a little chaotic, but this system will automate it a little more. There's obviously a, a cost involved, the equipment, the, the handy haulers outside. I encourage you guys to take a look at it and as well as the truck, you'll kind of see how the operation even goes. Everything's out there. It makes a more efficient workforce. It makes for just, I think cleaner streets in general in Galt.
It'd be safer for your personnel too.
Yeah, and that's, that's a big thing too, is that we won't have people grabbing large objects, throwing them into the back of the trucks. It's kind of puts the onus on homeowner to kind of work safe. But with that said, with the large objects, we also have a second service for that, which Steve talked about, and it's the, the bulky waste cleanup as well. So that's for things like white goods, which is kind of a term in our industry, but that's refrigerators, washers, dryers, large appliances, things like that. And then as well as furniture and something that you as a person couldn't lift over the side of something to get into your, to your container. So we feel like that's going to meet the needs of the, those residents as the bulky waste is done now, but we're just kind of cleaning it up, doing it a little more efficiently. So I've kind of spoke about some of the added programs that Cal Waste has included in this proposal. Steve elaborated on most all of them. I just kind of did a go around on some of them, but we've been in the community for over 30 years. I grew up here. I played on the county line soccer team and played the indoor soccer around the corner. We're not going anywhere. We're a huge part of this community and I was instilled with that at a young age. We do everything from booster events for the rotary. We do school events at no charge. We go do the scout troops. They use our equipment to do the collection of the Christmas trees. They get the tips from you guys. We do FFA events. We do in-kind service for them, fireworks. We donate money to the fireworks. I mean, I, I don't want to toot the horn, but we're, we're part of Galt. We're here to stay. I believe we're a valued partner in this community and we appreciate being here in the city of Galt and hopefully want to stay. I guess I'll somewhat wrap up on, on this slide is that this is our current diversion right now in the city of Galt as measured in some weird way that Richard said over here.
[laughter]
And we're at, we're at 64% right now and the goal statewide is to reach 75% by 2020. The only way to do that is to make that little red part of that pie a lot smaller and the other parts bigger. And each incremental portion to make those non-red parts bigger are harder than the last 1%. So I think it's, it's, it's time to do this and we believe this contract does that for the citizens and the city and for us as a hauler. And this is my last slide, but we just celebrated our 90th year in business last year and we want to celebrate 90 more and we want the city of Galt to be part of that. So I'll be here for questions and just, Steve's going to wrap up the presentation and thank you guys for.
Thank you. Thank you, Rudy. Well, I, I won't look at the audience to see if they've had enough of us, so this is our last slide. So after, any questions that the council might have or public speaker comments that I'm sure there are several of? We are recommending that council approve the proposed new and amended contract collection services agreement, subject to a future successful passage of a Prop 218 protest hearing. We're proposing that you authorize the city manager to make any small edits that we may find. This was put together in the last couple of weeks, including. This was put together in the last couple of weeks, including the holiday weekend. So we're still finding a few typos here and there. But if you'd authorize the city manager with concurrence with the city attorney, if we find a few more of those that are in the next few days, we'd like to clean those up as it is a long-term contract. We're recommending that you set January 15th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. That's a normal city council meeting for a public hearing on the proposed rates, and that you direct staff to prepare and mail citywide Prop 218 notices to all customers and property owners pursuant to the requirements of Prop 218 within the city limits. With that, we would welcome questions from council, or it's your pleasure to open it up to the audience for comments.
Any further questions before we start public comment? Open public comment. Ruben Epstein.
My name is Ruben Epstein. I have lived in the same house in Galt for 41 years, so I guess I'm qualified as a resident. Some of my questions are partly answered. It sounds like the app should help a lot in making sense out of what goes where. I've had a lot of problems with it. Other people I know have had problems with it in trying to make sense out of it. And I'm looking forward to seeing that. The question I have about it, though, is, is it based just on information from people in the professional field of trash collecting, or has it also been tested with general public? Because sometimes professionals see things one way and the general public sees it another way. So I don't know if it needs more research. The other things I have, one of the things that was on the PowerPoint that I don't understand is what is e-waste? I know what e-waste is, but I never heard of u-waste. And that was up there on one of them, so I would like to know what that means. There is kind of a catch-22 going on. Cal Waste says we should clean out cans and bottles. And I'm not sure what the definition of clean is. Just rinsing it out or cleaning it with a brush so everything possible is out? The other side of that for the catch-22 is the city says we should be saving water. So if we have to clean out the cans and bottles, how could we do it without using water? It may sound silly, but it gets confusing. We're trying to do two opposite things. The other item that didn't get mentioned is what is going to happen with the Amazon effect? That there are more and more corrugated boxes going through the system because more people are buying things that way? And what effect is that going to have? Is people taking that into account on what we're going to have on corrugated paper waste? The other item really doesn't have to do with Cal Waste, but it is a problem for us laypeople. Hazardous waste. It's not picked up except batteries. It's hard to get information as to where you can take things. I had some treated wood. I finally found out after a lot of phone calls and digging around that I can take it down to Harney Lane. But then it costs me $20 a truck full, plus the gas. Apparently, someplace in Elk Grove will take fluorescent lights, eight-foot, four-foot tubes, but then, which sounds like a stupid requirement, they want you to get rid of these things. You can't put them in the regular trash, but they'll want you to take a small number on each trip. So you have to make 52 trips back and forth to Elk Grove to get rid of fluorescent bulbs, and then you're creating more air pollution from the gas going back and forth. So it would be nice if people could get on the same page on trying to make these things as usable as possible for consumers. Autozone, for example, in Galt will take used oil. But they won't take used oil if some water has gotten mixed into it. I don't know where you legally can get rid of that used oil with water in it. They didn't have an answer. I'm not sure what other answers there are. But for general population, those things can drive us crazy. I want to recycle, but sometimes I don't know how. I've gone to e-waste things, and they will take computers and screens, but they won't take toasters. And they won't take other appliances. And apparently, Cal Waste won't take them either legally. So where do they go? We used to have-
Mr. Epstein, you have 10 seconds.
I'll stop, but you get the idea.
Do we want to answer the questions now? Do you want to answer the questions now, or you want to wait until?
It's up to you. I can offer some comments.
Okay, go ahead.
All good questions.
Yeah.
All good questions. So let me give you a couple of answers. How do we know what to recycle? The Cal Waste app is great. Not everybody has a cell phone or is computer literate. So on your way out, on the round table in the middle of the foyer, is a insert that we put in the Galt Herald and Sacramento Bee, in part sponsored by Cal Waste, the printing thereof. We have hundreds of these as part of the public education. This is a six-page insert that will tell you more than you probably wanted to know about which can and what can be recycled. Great question. So please pick one up. They're free. So a question was asked, how do we define u-waste? And it's defined in the contract. It's short for universal waste. It's a, have an acronym that governments like to use. And the definition used in the contract for universal waste is electronic waste, e-waste, dry cell batteries, that'd be conventional home batteries that don't have liquid in them, non-empty aerosol cans, fluorescent lamps, fluorescent tubes, fluorescent bulbs, mercury-containing thermostats, and other mercury-containing equipment. So that's what the state defines as universal waste that is illegal to dispose of in a landfill. So we are now required to pull it out. Most of those items will be accepted by the household hazardous waste facility in Elk Grove. And no, you don't have to make multiple trips. If you've got six fluorescent tubes, you don't have to make six trips. They will typically accept, and I'm doing this from memory, I believe it's 125 pounds per trip, per resident, at no charge to the residents. There is a charge at the city, but it's built into the fees that you're paying for garbage and the franchise fees that Cal Waste pays back to the city. That's how we fund that program. So we've in fact put several newsletter articles out encouraging carpooling for HHW, since you're not making one trip to Elk Grove for one little bag of compact fluorescent tubes. We encourage you to go with your neighbors, and if they've got paint, used paint, if you've got pesticides, you know, make one trip. Just on our city of Galt website and on the Elk Grove facilities website are what they will and won't take and what the limits are. Typically, you can get between 100 and 200 pounds, depending on what it is. No, they will not take hazardous waste, such as fuels and bomb materials or grenades or explosives. They won't take nuclear waste. But generally, most of the things that are legal to have in your home that are not legal to put in your garbage can, again, go on our website, get this handout up in the foyer. That'll help to find that for you. I know we have more speakers, but just appliances, if they have a cord on them, they're considered typically to be either an appliance or e-waste. Cal Waste will take appliances. And anything that they're unable to take can be taken typically to the Elk Grove facility. We also contract with city of Sacramento at their Fruit Ridge facility if somebody was in Sacramento and wanted to make a drop off. And again, no cost to the person dropping it off. It's built into your rates here as part of the proposal.
Okay, thank you. Katie Wiley.
Hi, mayor, city council members, and fellow neighbors in Galt. As a community member who was born smack dab in the middle of the millennial generation, a mother of four-year-old twins, and a local business owner, I can tell you that I support Cal Waste and their proposed plan to keep our community safe and clean. When I first moved to Galt three years ago, I found that Cal Waste was one of the most accessible entities in our town. Their crew members are always a friendly face at community events. The drivers are so personable and respectful. After only a couple of weeks of waving from my four-year-old twins, our driver, Isidro Becerra, stopped his truck, let his, my twins on, and showed them around and answered a bunch of questions. It was the highlight of their life and continues to be something that we talk about every single Tuesday. It was awesome. As for their presence on the web, I couldn't be more thrilled. If I need to find out where a greasy pizza box goes or birthday present wrapping paper, I just have to search that app and it comes up immediately. Anytime I want to find out event information for something that's going on in this town, it's always promoted on their Facebook page. And if I want to see about all the great behind-the-scenes stuff that they do for the community, it's on their Instagram feed. Any questions I might have, I just go to their website. It truly is helpful for someone who doesn't like to use the phone, because I'm a millennial, and someone who always has the phone in their hand. Cal Waste is fantastic, and I fully support everything that they're doing in our town, and I would not want them to leave. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Gail Weber, and while I'm not an actual resident of the city of Galt, I'm a vested member of this community. The current rate increase in Cal Waste's contract does not affect me directly, but I am sure the company that services my address will soon follow with their own rate increases due to the California state mandated regulations. While I may not personally pay my bill to Cal Waste, I am certainly impacted by Cal Waste's presence in the Galt community. I consider Cal Waste not a faceless corporation, but a member of our community. Their unwavering support of the many nonprofits and other organizations is felt throughout our community every day. We're all going to have to pay these rate increases, whether in our monthly bills to Cal Waste, the city of Galt, or Sacramento County. Do the residents of Galt want to pay them to our neighbor, Cal Waste, or to a big faceless corporation who really won't give a damn about our great American little town? I do have two questions, though, is how much of this rate increase is actually the city's administration costs in going back into the city's pockets? And is the council finally going to do something about this or continue to drag it out? Thank you.
Good evening, council members. And I know what a bitter pill it is whenever we're asking the public to increase their fees or increase their, or decrease their pocketbooks. But I wanted to come in support of Cal Waste tonight. As someone that spent 20 years in the private sector, I know that it's very hard to be a successful businessperson. You have to deal with government regulations, competition, environmental concerns, and that determines whether you can stay in business and continue to provide an income for your workers. The taxpayers will accept giving part of their income and putting it towards something that betters their lives. Measure R, for example. How we need to be sure, but we need to be sure that the citizens are treated fairly. The city council negotiated a contract with Cal Waste. The city of Galt will get, will receive a 10% franchise tax, 2% administration fees, and collect a $1.30 a month billing fee. Cal Waste has not asked for a fee increase since 2013, while continuing to invest in the future of our community. Yet he still has delivered excellent service to the people of Galt. Cal Waste has a history of generosity to support our community. They support the festivals, community garden, and community cleanup, just to name a few. Is there a value in that? Of course there is. We in Galt love the spirit of the small town that we find in our different festivals and events. And Cal Waste deserves the respect and appreciation of being a company servicing our community. But Dave Akerasa and Cal Waste is not asking for payback for their contributions, just a fair shake to continue to be in business. They did not make the regulations that lawmakers in Sacramento has passed, but must comply with them, just as the city of Galt must comply with regulations from the Water Control Excellent service plus dedication to the community of Galt and providing 110 jobs and shopping with local vendors, Cal Waste deserves to recover the cost of complying with the regulations. Galt is constantly trying to attract good business to help economic development. We have a good company, and I want to see them to continue to be an important part of our economy. Garbage is not like water. If you don't have it readily available, you cannot survive. But disposable, but disposal of our waste and garbage affects our lives in serious ways. The way we breathe, and the land in which we live, and our quality of life. These things affect everybody, the rich and the poor. I believe that Dave Akerasa and Cal Waste does realize this, and they aren't greedy for profit for themselves, but want to provide a fair and decent wage for their workers and continue to serve Galt in the best way they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Galene Gomez, and I'm a resident of Galt. I have been for 22 years. I'm a teacher here in the Galt Elementary School District for 13 years, and I'm one of the founding members of Perfectly Possible, which is a local nonprofit serving at-risk animals here in the Galt area. I'm here to ask that you do approve the proposed contract for Cal Waste Recovery Systems in order to ensure that our community's homes and businesses continue to receive the same high level of personal service we've come to know and expect. It's rare to find a company that acts in the best interest of their customers and community the way that Cal Waste Recovery Systems does. When faced with the challenges of enormous change and the multitude of burdensome laws and mandates, Cal Waste has once again developed a strategy to meet those goals and set our community up for the successful future and achieving compliance. I understand there will be a rate increase, the first since 2013, and I'll be honest, I think it's necessary. It's in all, it's all of our responsibility to care for the community in which we live. I honestly can't think of any of the services that I currently subscribe to where I haven't had a rate increase in five years. I'm also aware that a portion of the funds that are generated from the sale of the recyclables will be returned to the city for rate relief and to fund other city-related programs. It'll be up to our city's leadership to make sure that these funds are used as stated. Cal Waste's vast industry knowledge, excuse me, reputation for service and its willingness to do the right thing makes them a valuable part of what makes Galt such a special place to live. Beyond the residential service I have appreciated over the years, my personal experience with the management of Cal Waste came when Cal Waste Recovery Facility discovered an issue with their ever-multiplier feral cats on site. Dave had his team call our organization, Perfectly Possible, to help to learn how to manage the colony. In a responsible and a humane- the colony in a responsible and a humane manner. Over the course of the year, we trapped and neutered, vaccinated, and released the feral cats. We've also removed, fostered, and socialized many of the kittens and found them forever homes. Today, the Cal Waste team has learned to manage the colony on their own. They identify newcomers immediately, and it has resulted in no kittens being found out there for over the past year. They are truly the example of how to control a situation that challenges many areas of our community. Finally, it is because of this sense of commitment to better our community that I know Cal Waste is the best choice to continue providing solid waste and recycling service to Galt. Please vote to approve the contract and keep Cal Waste as a valued member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Galene.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Huer, who's probably going to come back in a second. There she is. All right. My name is Jennifer Collier, and I am an adult mentor to the Galt Youth Commission. I am here to share with the council the positive and engaging partnership the youth in the city of Galt have with Cal Waste Recovery Systems. We collaborate in the Bright Future Learning Center several times throughout the year in environmental education. Earth Day and recycling programs educate young people with the impact of reuse, recycle, repurpose, plastic, and paper, and biodegradable materials. From elementary school gardens to creative, interactive art displays, young people are learning about the impact of their habits with materials that they have used. They are learning the purpose behind being thoughtful about the future of their community and their environment. The partnership between young people and Cal Waste is one with a future in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tracy Cross, and I would like to support the changes for Cal Waste Recovery System as a community and a community partner and a customer. The new requirements of the state mandates have not come to us as a surprise because Cal Waste has done a superb job in keeping our community informed over the last two to three years with these upcoming requirements. They have personally invited us as residents to their informational meetings and sincerely sought our feedback. And I would like to share how Cal Waste has committed, has a committed interest in our high schools and our community, and why it is vital to keep our contract with them. Cal Waste has invested in serving our community since they arrived in Galt, and when they moved here, one of the first things they did was ask me how they could help our high school youth. And now, they play an active role in educating our students in a variety of careers in this field. They have partnered with our Transition Partnership Program in providing not only tours of the facility, but student internships, work experience, and permanent employment for our students and their family members, including those with disabilities. They have served in positions in customer service, office staff, sorting, mechanical assistants, and facility cleaning and upkeep. Several members of the Cal Waste staff and Dave Akeraza have been repeat guest speakers and participated in mock interviews and mentored our students in our general education and special education. And they've also participated in our career fair, excuse me, annually. And in fact, this month, they're scheduled to come and be a guest speaker for us in our job club and take part in our mock interviews in December. In addition to this, they provided tours and raised awareness and interest in taking care of our community and beyond with recycling and proper disposal, excuse me, proper disposal of items in our homes. And personally, I love the app because I don't forget to put my trash cans out anymore. And I really, I use it to look up things, how to recycle, excuse me, if it can be recycled or not. So I believe that Cal Waste operates above and beyond their motto of giving more than they take. They're more than a valuable asset to our community, and they're involved in almost every community event, donating money, scholarships, and in-kind donations of picking up and dropping off trash and recycling bins. And as a job developer, a Galt Youth Commission mentor, and Galt Rotary member, I've seen Cal Waste say yes to every request that we've made, and they're always generous, not only in these, but they join us at the community dinner and fundraising events. They help set up and serve and clean up. And I believe that they are the model of success in giving more than they take, and I sincerely hope that Cal Waste will remain our waste and recovery system for our community for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Yvette Rodriguez, and I am an employee of Cal Waste. I am here to represent the 33 employees of the Materials Recovery Facility Early Shift. This letter is to respectfully request that you approve the Galt Cal Waste contract that is before you tonight. We are currently employed by Cal Waste, and as residents of Galt and neighboring communities, we can clearly see that Cal Waste is a good partner in the Galt community. The Cal Waste team is focused on providing superior collection and recycling services on time and with the utmost care. Cal Waste genuinely cares about its employees. Our team works hard each and every day to ensure that we provide the highest quality of customer service delivered with a sense of warmth, friendliness, company spirit, and individual pride. Cal Waste supports its employees both at work and in our community activities. As residents of Galt, we stand beside Cal Waste and understand that this rate increase is necessary to continue to provide a clean and healthy environment for our community. We stand before you tonight to ask that you approve the Galt Cal Waste contract, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. My name is Stacy Hemenover, and I am an employee of Cal Waste Recovery Systems. I am here this evening to represent over 110 people that work from our Galt headquarters. We stand together to ask the council to approve the Galt Cal Waste contract at tonight's meeting. Our team is focused on providing superior collection and recycling services on time and with care. Not only does Cal Waste provide a safe and clean working environment for its employees, but for the community as well. Our team works very hard every day to ensure every action is taken to meet the goals set before us, striving to complete our work in a friendly and cooperative manner. We know that Dave and the team here at Cal Waste is committed to its customers and employees, always willing to listen to new ideas, building family spirit, and encouraging individual growth. Many of our employees have worked for Cal Waste for more than 20 years. That speaks to loyalty. Many are new, and that speaks to opportunity. We hear a great deal about how our company is a partner in the community, and we agree. Our work is built on relationships with over 90 local vendors to ensure the high level of service our customers expect. The entire Cal Waste team is a good partner in our community. This is our home. We coach baseball teams, tutor students after school, volunteer for community service, river cleanups, and organize donations for local animal shelters. As employees, no one is more aware of the challenges we face to meet state and local regulations. As residents of Galt and neighboring communities, we recognize the increases in services needed to meet state mandates that will result in rate increases. We accept this and know that with a secure job and good working conditions, we will be making a valuable contribution to the community in which we work and live. These are my coworkers, and together, we ask that you approve the Cal Waste Recovery Systems contract this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Durand. I'm the Service Learning Coordinator for the Galt Elementary School District, and I also coordinate the Environmental Education Program at the Casamnes River Preserve. I'm speaking this evening to voice my support for the good work Cal Waste is doing in our schools and in our community. For the last five years, Cal Waste has sponsored a recycle education program in our elementary schools in second and fourth grades. You've heard a bit about that program. Each student participates in a series of lessons that teach about natural resources, the environment, and the importance of practicing the three Rs every day. But they also learn a fourth R, the R that stands for responsibility, and the personal responsibility they have to take care of the environment. Each school year, more than 1,000 students learn how their efforts are making a difference. Cal Waste also provides free field trips to the Materials Recovery Facility in Galt. During this tour, the students observe what happens to the recycled items that they've placed in the recycle bins at home or at school. Field trips to the Materials Recovery Facility are sometimes combined with field trips to the Casamnes River Preserve, where students are involved in habitat restoration projects. Again, students are learning how the decisions they make on a daily basis directly impact the environment. For many years, Cal Waste has been a major supporter of a range of community events, including the Galt Winter Bird Festival, Strawberry Festival, Galt Youth Commission Art Exhibit, and the Extravaganza. Last year, some Cal Waste employees also joined the Casamnes River Preserve and Galt Elementary School District staffed on the canoe mobile event. In that event, more than 700 local paddled canoes on the Casamnes River. Recently, Cal Waste also made a significant donation to the Galt Area Historic Society for the support of McFarlane Living History Ranch. Cal Waste continues to be a strong and engaged community partner, making Galt a better place to live, work, and recreate. It's no wonder Dave Akeraza was recognized by the Community of Character Coalition with the Pride and Community Award. Dave and his family-owned business really do live up to his motto, "We give more than we take." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Derek Silva. I'm a resident of this great community as well as an educator at Galt High School. Understand that Cal Waste is currently in negotiations with the city. However, I feel I am here to speak about Cal Waste's commitment to our community tonight. Several years ago, Cal Waste contacted me in hopes of giving back to the community through our Career Technical Education Program at Galt High School. Cal Waste was instrumental in providing valuable industry insight into the reorganization and structure of our agriculture power mechanics pathway. This support was provided through direct advisement and commitment to the students of Galt, ultimately playing a huge role in the development of vocational skills and aptitudes required in the industry. Working together, Cal Waste has donated scrap bins for free that allows our program to recycle steel, and then use the checks to purchase tools, equipment, and fund our small gas engines team, as well as purchase FFA jackets for members who cannot afford to do so. To this date, together, we have scrapped almost 24 tons of steel. Cal Waste has employed current and former students who have gone through my CTE program, ultimately allowing them to apply school-based knowledge to a relevant, real-world application while also getting paid. The contribution that Cal Waste has made back into our local high school is paramount to the program's overall success. Career technical education programs need the industry's support from companies such as Cal Waste. Cal Waste can be counted on to drop off a dumpster at the school farm for fair livestock projects for both school sites while offering internships and scholarships for local students. It is because of this business's commitment to our students that Cal Waste has received both the Distinguished Service Award as well as an honorary chapter membership through the Galt FFA. In today's world, talk is cheap and actions speak louder than words. Cal Waste, in my experience, does give more than they take. They have shown this by their continual investment and involvement in our community. Ultimately, their actions do speak louder than their words. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Sheri Daly, I live in the city. This is the most positive rate increase meeting I've ever been to, and I think that speaks highly to what a great community partner that Cal Waste has been for all time, and thank you for that. I have a couple of questions, though, specifically on how the residents of the mobile home parks will be billed. Not all of them, but a lot of them are some of the most financially vulnerable citizens of our community, and my concern is that although they own their units, they are still paying rent for the space that they sit upon, but there's an asset there. So they're not truly like an apartment complex where if you don't pay your bill, you get in trouble, smother whoever. In this case, if you don't pay your bill, I'm concerned that they would be evicted because it's part of your rent. I'm also a little concerned, I've talked to several people that live in two of the parks, actually, and their thoughts are that if they have a complaint about their bill, if they want to review it, or they disagree with it, that they don't have a way to do that because it's tied to their rent. So a lot of them feel as though they don't have any venue to appeal a utility bill, not just a waste or a water bill, but also an electricity bill. And a lot of them are afraid to say anything because this is their home for the rest of their lives, they don't want to make waves, they don't want to argue with the owners of the park. So if there was some way that some sort of disclosure could be made about how their bills will be collected and how they will be allotted, I think that would be something they would like to see and what they can do if they have a dispute over what their bill is. And then, on a personal note, I try really hard to like get everything into the recycle bin the right way, and I'm sorry, 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 I put the dirty pizza boxes in every week. I will stop doing that, or scrape the stuff off, I don't know, I'll figure it out. But my big question, when I saw this a couple months ago when you all first started talking about it, was, okay, so the Californians do this because there's too much methane gas emitting. So then I thought, well, what if I do my own compost thing at home? Am I just making a little gas pile? Am I helping to do that? I'm not understanding the science behind, I mean, I get that gases are destroying the atmosphere, but is there something I can do as a person? I stopped putting my eggs in the disposer because I was wasting water. Now I find that I'm adding to green waste, so I'm really confused if I put a little compost, am I just doing the same thing on a smaller scale and not helping, or does the waste go someplace magical and get disposed of where it doesn't make gas? And just to end back to the mobile home parks, is there a possibility that they can combine? Like if three people want only one green waste and they want to share it, or if the park decides we only want one for every two units if they agree as a group they want to do that, or if they want to do a compost site? Because, you know, the properties for the mobile parks have a lot of space. So is there something that would be worked out with their group billing that could help offset some of the increase if they're willing to do the work to reduce the amount they're contributing? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment.
I got a couple comments. I think it's pretty apparent, and I personally agree that Cal Waste has been a great partner with the city. I know I was involved on Sacramento Environmental Commission when we went to 50% diversion. That was tough. 75%. You guys are magicians, if you can, I mean, it's got to be some magic there to get to I would encourage everybody to use the app. I know I do. It's really great because I don't have to walk out and see what everybody else has put out on garbage night. It reminds me it's garbage night, and it tells me what to put out, so it's kind of nice there. Saves me a couple trips back and forth. I do have one question on the contract, and I think it's just a definition, minor cleanup, but I'm looking at line 361 where it defines a SFD, which is a service unit. That's a dwelling unit duplex, triplex, or fourplex located on a single parcel. Now, if you go to the annual pickup, which is line 1503, it says that the collection is only once a year... it says that the collection is only once a year for a SFD, which is a single-family residence. Well, here's a scenario for you, and I've actually run across this. If, let's say I sell my house and I get rid of a bunch of junk. So I call for my annual pickup, and I get you three and a half cubic yard container and get rid of it. Two months later, the new owner moves in, and they got all this other packing stuff for moving, and they call. They're a customer, not a single-family dwelling unit. So it's just, is it by customer or is it by dwelling? Because I can see that scenario happening. In fact, one gal, my dad, should come up to me and tell me it did happen. It did happen to her. So that's my only comment. Other than that, you know, any rate increase, I mean, I'm recently on a fixed income myself. Nobody likes it, but you can see what the state of California has done. They've laid these regulations on us, and they said, oh, by the way, the people at the end, which is us, have to pay for it.
Further comments?
Go ahead, Ash.
Well, it wasn't without a lot of consideration. We had a little bit of weeping and gnashing of teeth and work some things out. And I think a nice negotiation and compromise was made, and we really appreciate you guys and everything you've done. Nice job, Rudy.
Mark?
Well, we've already talked about it as far as the greenhouse gases and the compressed natural gas. And I'd like to see us get ahead of this as far as some type of anaerobic digester. It benefits the community. It benefits all involved. But as usual, the hard part is the price point. But I'm very much happy with what Cal Waste has done for this community and can't say enough nice things about them.
So I just have a couple of questions about education. One, about educating customers that the twenty-gallon cart, twenty gallons, going to cost them the same as a thirty-eight. So they might want to switch over to the thirty-eighth when they get the new things. So I'd really like some outreach to those twenty-gallon customers, that that happened. The other item is educating the mobile home parks. And my other question about mobile home parks, since they're going to be billed as a single, one single bill to the owner of the property, will those residents still be eligible for the one-time or twice-a-year pickup? Or are they not? Or is it just one for the park now that they won't be billed individually?
It appears that they would meet the definition of a single SFD, so...
Each resident?
Each unit, I would think.
That's line, yeah, that's line three.
Steve, you want to take a shot at that?
There've been a number of questions, and we'd like to certainly answer all of council's questions in pondering this decision ahead. To Lori's immediate question, if they are receiving individual carts, they are considered, for the purposes of this contract, a single-family dwelling. And therefore would be eligible for the handy hauler and the bulky waste individually. If they are using a larger one cubic yard, two cubic yards, they fall into the multifamily dwelling unit under Section nine of the contract. And there is a provision for bulky waste there. And I'm reading on the fly here. I don't have this completely memorized. I apologize. So they still get the two, and does that apply to the whole complex or sort of an equivalent of per unit?
Or space or...
So, for those that can't hear, Cal Waste staff have indicated that the multifamily dwellings, which should be your apartment complexes, mobile home parks that aren't receiving the individual containers, are still eligible for the bulky waste two per year per unit as part of the price proposed.
Okay. So then my other question would be regarding... Because actually, in switching this over with the mobile home parks, I know previously I've talked to mobile home residents, and they've had problems with their utilities about the property. Hopefully, it's gotten resolved, but sometimes the property owners tack on extra charges to them up and beyond what the charge would be from the city and Cal Waste. They add on extra money onto that. So I guess that's why I really want, and some way, and they... I was assisting a customer because they had some problems with PG&E regarding that. They weren't getting billed what they were using. They were actually getting billed beyond what they were using. And it was really hard to negotiate who to talk to and how to handle that sort of issue. So I do really, I don't want to see the mobile home parks, under changing the system, end up with those residents being charged more than what the actual rate is, though I totally understand that we have an issue with mobile home parks about some of the residents choosing not to pay their bill, which then all of us as utility payers are Cal Waste. We're all losing money on that, right? So everybody needs to pay for their garbage pickup. So that's, I just want to, you know, be sure that there's some way... I know that if a customer currently has a dispute, they call the city. It's given to Cal Waste to, you know, if there's a complaint for Cal Waste to correct the complaint. And Cal Waste has always been absolutely fabulous about that. The customer service is, as I said, five-star. I've never seen a company go as above and beyond as much as Cal Waste does. What they do for our community, just the event coming up in a week from now, Vet Stock on September fifteenth, I think I have that date right. You know, you're the major sponsor for an event coming to our community that will benefit veterans with disabilities, with mental health issues. So I just, I'm always amazed at what a good community member you are and how much you give back to this community. So those are my only concerns, is that, you know, that we really do protect... Because most of the mobile home parks are senior citizens, some of them very elderly, and sometimes it becomes very hard for where they should go to be able to get those issues concerned. Otherwise, I know the residential customers are... We also, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware. We also received, as a council, all of us received about twenty letters also in support of Cal Waste, and I received no letters against Cal Waste, against us approving the contract. There was about twenty letters encouraging us to approve the contract. So I did want to let Cal Waste know that you received lots of letters from the community and let the community know.
Any further discussion?
Yes. You know, I've worked with Dave now for close to thirty years in various capacities, and I have been amazed at, you know, the way in which his business runs. It is very efficient. It's very clean, and he provides the service exceeds what service is required. And I'm very pleased that the city and Dave were able to come to an agreement in order to extend the contract and keep Cal Waste in the community. So there's no other comments. I'd like to make a motion for approval.
I was going to second that, yeah.
Go with staff recommendation, or do you want them individually called out? Staff recommendation, okay, which has three parts to it. All in the same resolution, okay.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamson?
Yes.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes. Five-oh vote. Communication?
None tonight.
City Clerk's report?
Nothing tonight.
Pardon? Oh, did you want to speak, Dave? Oh, you're welcome. Well, thank you. Thank you. Thank you to your family, your business. You do so much for the community, besides just giving back more than you take. I'm not done. We're not done.
Communication?
City Clerk's report? Nothing tonight.
They want to give it a minute.
Comments by staff?
Shh. The teacher. Sorry.
They want to take, give it a minute till the...
Mr. Linkler?
Oh, he better not sing anymore.
Well, I'm encouraged. I'll have to do more rate increases.
No.
No, I'm getting bad form. Thank you for your support. You heard about the Safe Routes to School and approved the change order, and the contractor, sort of leaning forward with staff's allowance, is already posted, and they'll probably start that pre-construction work on First Street as soon as tomorrow. And work is still progressing out on Merango Road for River Oaks Unit Three, and that'll actually occur over the course of the next six months or so. Still waiting on railroad agreements and budget improvements and things, but that'll proceed as weather permits. But we've got it open, and school's doing well out there as far as traffic flow, so that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Just a quick reminder that next Tuesday at the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in the morning session, the tax sharing agreement will be on their consent calendar. And then at two-thirty in the afternoon at the Board of Supervisors will be the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. They're actually looking to approve the environmental documents, the actual plan itself. After that, it will then make its round with the cities and expect it to come to the council mid-October.
Thank you. Ms. Hall?
I just wanted to take some time to mention some of the positions that the city is currently recruiting for. We have a police officer, associate senior planner, plant maintenance mechanic, parks worker one, recreation worker two, public works maintenance worker one, and the finance director. And I just wanted to note that the first round of interviews for the finance director will be taking place next Thursday on September thirteenth. I just wanted to say all of these positions are listed on the city's website. Interested individuals to visit the city's website for further details and to apply. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Solis?
I do. I have, as you guys know, we have the reopening of our community park playground. It will be this Friday, six-thirty. I kept getting up to see what time, you know, the sunset would be so we could start the movie that we'll be having after the opening. We'll have food trucks there, one food truck, two dessert trucks. Walmart has become a major sponsor of the event. Save Mart will be stepping up and donating some product also. As I told you, this is one of my goals as a director, that this is what I wanted to do before I retired. And so we'll be seeing the Sandlot on a baseball field at Community Park on Friday, so...
I was going to ask what movie, okay.
It's only appropriate because the playground equipment is baseball-themed, so... And with swings also at the community park, so... Vet Stock, as you mentioned, September fifteenth, and Farm to Fork on September twenty-second are all events coming up for September.
Thank you. Chief?
And this evening, I actually don't have anything.
Kim?
Well, the legislature is adjourned, so we're watching to see what is going to be happening with all the bills and what the governor will sign and veto, so we'll have an update later on that. And other than that, I'm looking forward to spending some time on Armando's baseball fields this weekend with my son in a tournament he's playing at here, so...
Oh, nice. Eugene?
Yeah, two items. The first county-wide oversight board meeting is scheduled for Monday, September tenth, and they requested city staff to attend to talk about our successor agency. Vera Wittenberg and I will be in attendance and just give the board a brief update on where we're at with our redevelopment. The Assemblyman Kylie also sent a letter, and I passed it on to the city council via email. And thanks for support of AB twenty-five ninety-six, which the council, you know, sent a letter to the state legislator, I believe it was in April, in support of a statewide economic development plan. That's going to the governor's desk, one of the bills that's going to the governor's desk. Unless I hear otherwise, just based on that motion from the council, I'll go ahead and prepare a letter and send that to the governor to support the signature on that legislation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Any comments by city council? Any future agenda items?
No, I'm fine.
Seeing none, meeting adjourned.